I am supportive of both letters and adding them to our agenda this year.
Thank you very much Commissioner Wells.
Agreed.
Commissioner Son? Commissioner Ball?
No objections.
Commissioner Horton? Excellent, among all the commissioners, we'll go ahead and take. Is a formal vote necessary for that Kurt, or can we go ahead and do that informally?
Well, I think that you've all agreed to it, and then you can amend the agenda after one meeting.
Got it, okay. Well, just so no one has any surprises, that is going to be one that will show up as a suggested addition to our agenda. We'll begin the staff updates, beginning with the FCC update, and we will have Dane Peterson lead us off. Welcome Dane.
Good afternoon Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm assuming I'm controlling the slides. Alright, thanks you guys, I was coming here to do our update, our nine-month update, see where we're at, improvements we got going on. We'll go over our call center updates, quality of service percentages, service improvements, how many current subscribers we have, recycling, and what we got going on with our carts. This is our missed service reports for August 2025, we had 14 calls a day. You can see by the graph what category we'd be with calls coming in for either premium service problems, missed trash, cart request, or missed recycling. We were having about 14 calls a day for this. This is reported missed collections, if you look up here, just breaks it down per week, this July 27th week, and then so forth, so on. All the way through September the 14th week, and you can see the trend is definitely going in the right direction. And we keep this number, in our Track Ease program, so every time someone calls in for a missed pickup, it goes into our system, and we get the percentages of the improvement of how many we're doing by week over week, what the number is. This right here is the actual service for Buncombe County, what we're servicing. This number 57,900 is basically how many customers we service per week. You got 40,000 customers for trash, and we service half the recycled customers on one week and the other half on the other week. Once again, it shows you a percentage of how many customers we're successfully servicing, and this is how many missed ops are, and that's how we get the percentage. Right now, we're at 99.89% for the year. The last week before this slide was done was 99.92% completion percentage. Let me rephrase that, not completion percentage, we're 100% completed, but a 92.92 success. I don't know, is this video able to play? Just controlling the. What, I control it or somebody's controlling it? There we go. These people have some questions of how we control our, or how we police our missed pickups and service validation, and make sure we're servicing. This is our third eye system. Every one of our trucks has this many cameras in it, we're able to track whether the carts are out, whether somebody set out behind us, or we actually did miss it, or if we done property damage, or if we got contaminated, like paint or something got through in there, we can police it by using this footage right here. And that is how we use for validating our roads over if we did or did not service them. Amongst the camera, it also has a GPS system in it, and shows all the roads that we're tracking. This is demonstration of our automated side loader truck servicing a neighborhood. Anyone have any questions for the slide presentation? Pretty self-explanatory.
And Louis, you have these capabilities on all your fleet that are operated?
All 24 routes have, all vehicles have these, and our route managers vehicles as well.
Is there any different mechanism for the bear proof cameras?
No sir, so when, even back at your previous hauler you had before, when we transferred over to the ASL vehicles, or to the trucks, we had to get to a new bear cart, it used to be the one you had to manually open. Back then, we had two man teams, no problem. When we went to ASL, the manufacturer came up with a gravity sensor lock, so when the cart thumps up, it opens the lock, so the cart opens up, we don't have to manually open it anymore. Alright, that's the video. Bear cart deployment, right now, current. Different slide. Current SCC bear customers are 1,723. We got 100 bear carts on inventory, we have another shipment to be here Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock, that's gonna give me 275. Bear carts delivered through September is 1,212. We were asked to give some information out to the public, of, you know, help keep the bears away, never feed or approach bears, secure food, garbage and recycling, remove bird feeders when bears are active, never leave pet food outdoors, clean and store your grills, and alert neighbors to bear activity. Current SCC subscribers, right now, we got 39,062 subscribers for trash and recycling services, surpassing the previous hauler of 36,483 customers. This number continues to grow each week, as more residents sign up for the service. We're basically averaging anywhere between 45 to 52 new customers per week, since we went live in January. Service improvements, continue to adjust the routes, as more customers sign up, to be sure that we have capacity on the truck, and what we are riding into the correct type of vehicle. So if we have a pup truck, eight yard truck, it's gonna be able to only pick up so much weight before it's got to go to the dump, so we always make sure we are operating on the right trucks, so we can save some of that service time. Fully staffed, and now have the swing drivers available to cover absences and assist on route when they get behind. So before, we were having staffing issues, but that's all resolved now, we're fully staffed, both our swing drivers are off vehicles, to help route managers, are to help assist trucks, we have breakdowns, or new people in training, we're able to better take care of that. Morning curout, all drivers are given a copy of any escalation from prior missed customers, along with a list of any new additions to the route, and they're sequenced, and they sequence them, so they are not missed the next service day. Before, we would just, somebody called in, said they were missed, we had a specific truck that would go out, pick it up, and then we'd continue to miss that same stop, so. I said it'd be better if we just sent the truck that was missing it out the next morning, before it started that day's route, so they would know where it's at for the following, we can get better on track, and help cut down some of these repeat misses. Evening check-in, dispatch verifies route completion, do the tablets, and third eye camera GPS system, which we had just watched a few seconds ago. Recycling tons comparison, January through July, we've picked up 3,877 tons. Previous hauler at the same timeframe picked up 3,073 tons, which is 804 more tons in the same timeframe. Once again, this is our cart inventory on hand right now, this actually has changed a little bit, bear cart jar, 164 gallon trash, 17, 64 gallon, we have 50 in stock now, 96 gallon trash, we have 72 in 96 gallon recycle, 144. This is a couple of photos of our community outreach programs we've done, this is the Evergreen Charter School, this is the Fairview Library, Touch a Truck Day that we were involved in, and we also had the one-year Hurricane Helene art show that we participated in last weekend as well. I got any questions?
I'll say thank you for how responsive you've been whenever the incident residents concerned your way, and though, one thing that seems to keep hanging on some billing issues, seems to be the challenge that I continue to hear about.
Yes, that is a, it's a corporate problem, it's an IT situation, it's not, I can't fix it at the site level, but if a customer does get to me and it is the escalated part, I can get that into the proper hands to get that escalation taken care of, but it is a, me and Dane were just talking about it, we have a call Thursday to try to fix the growing concern, what's happening is, people are making their third quarter payments, but it's not showing that their first and second quarter payments were already processed, so that was the problem. But people have already got returned checks back saying, hey, I did pay this, so it was just creating more calls. They're working on it, and hopefully by Thursday, I can have a better answer of what we're gonna move in the future, I know we got a couple suggestions that we talked about, hopefully we can lift that off everybody's plate and be done with it.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Question I have, when I'm out in the community now, I still hear people talking about that they're having problems getting to the call center, whereas if they want more carts, or whatever, but getting a response back, are you following up, I mean, do you keep track of that?
Yes sir, so what's happened is, because of her question, the billing situation has increased our call volume. We have, we went to our own personal call center, her own site, we have 10 people, they answered the phone, but if we're taking 400 calls a day, and they average two minutes, it just backed up the voicemails, so two weeks ago, I personally hired another person in, and that's all they do all day now, is strictly return the voicemails to get those calls answered a lot quicker than letting them sit there and individually getting to them, we have one person just assigned that task now.
Any other commissioner questions?
I'll just say we appreciate the continuous improvements, and you being here with us today.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Alright, next up, we have Ian with the Land of Sky, here to discuss the DEQ grant.
Screen is really big when you're standing in front of it. Alright, cool, it's working.
Alright, my name is Ian Bailey, I work for Land of Sky Regional Council, I'm in the Economic Development Department, and my business cards say that I'm a regional planner, I don't feel like I do a lot of regional planning, but Sarah assures me that I do. What I mostly do there is I focus on, these days I'm calling it energy security, because they keep changing the words I can't say about my work. I focus on alternative fuels, vehicles, and fleets, and end users, and I also focus on clean energy and energy resiliency, as kind of the two specialties that I work in. I also assist in some of Sarah's projects in digital opportunities, which I'm sure you all are familiar with. So our work is the result of partnership. In the days following Helene, we reached out to a number of our partners to try to connect with resources that we could bring into the area, and a couple of those were NCSA, and some friends of Sarah's out of Charlotte that do IT work. NCSA helped connect us with Footprint Project. Footprint Project is a nonprofit disaster response organization out of New Orleans, and what they do is they come in after a disaster, and they bring solar panels and battery storage systems, and deploy those to help offset the use of gas generators following a disaster. So, Footprint comes in, their premise is, they want to build back greener after every disaster. We combined that with our digital opportunities work, that Sarah does so much of, to connect communities with access to high-speed internet and devices, and in this case, we helped people to figure out how to connect to resources, a lot of times you're dealing with FEMA and forms, I'm sure everybody here is a little too intimately familiar with FEMA and forms. So through some of the digital navigation work that we do, we helped these people in the communities, as we co-deployed assets with Footprint Project, we sent Starlinks out, we dropped iPads in communities as loners, and then as we got our equipment supply up, we were able to start replacing people's tech and supplying refurbished laptops to folks that needed them around the communities. So requests come into Footprint Project through a lot of different places, they have an online form where they'll put out a social media call, and you can go in and request power after a disaster. They also have partnerships all over the world in places that they've worked, and they, a lot of times, get things that come in second or third hand. For example, this particular request came in after this storm, had passed through somebody who knew somebody who sat on the board for Footprint Project, and by the time these requests get there, third hand, they're full of emotion, they're kind of hard to understand sometimes, we don't know what the need is, or if there is still an existing need, and that's a big part of the process that I played coming from Land of Sky, is I grew up in western North Carolina, I know the communities, I know a lot of people in the communities, and I was able to help them sort out these requests and figure out where these places were as we moved. Some of the examples of places that we had deployed is, this is the Rollins community in Marshall, there were more houses there in this image prior to the storm, a lot of devastation. In Rollins, we put out a large ground mount array, and a couple small arrays with battery storage systems, the battery storage system on this one is actually right here, it's two Tesla Power Walls, and the necessary electronics to run them off-grid, all on a pallet. As that got deployed out, this particular community, they were using it to run fans and lights, to store food and medicine, and to run oxygenators and CPAPs for the residents that lived there overnight. I just realized all my notes are backwards too, so this could be fun. We also, another example here in Buncombe County is Barnardsville, a community, ad hoc community hub popped up in Barnardsville post-storm, we were able to supply them with some of the small portable units, and also with one of these trailer microgrids that has PV mounted to the roof, it's got batteries and inverters inside, and then it's also got accommodation to lay out a ground mount array and add more photovoltaics back to that. Here's a map that we generated around the end of October, to show kind of the layout of where Footprint, Land of Sky assets went to. We had served almost a half of the requests that came in by the end of the month, there was over 100 kilowatts of PV deployed, we had over 250 kilowatt hours of battery storage. The sites reported back a cumulative total of over 2,000 people per day served through those sites, and over a million dollars of assets had flowed in through Footprint Project and Land of Sky into these areas. In November, our work continued, many of the sites that we had supported got power back, and we were able to pull those assets back out, and then we redeployed those to new places. Some of that is going out to places where they're doing ongoing construction and cleanup, and they don't have grid power at the buildings, so for business owners and office buildings, a lot of that went into people in long-term temporary housing that didn't have access to grid connections, so a lot of sites, Footprint is currently supporting around 60 sites in western North Carolina of people that are living in campers, that don't have grid power access, and would have to run generators to keep things going, so for those, we put a much smaller system, but about 5 to 10 kilowatt hours of battery storage, and a small solar array to help keep their refrigerator and lights and everything functioning without having to buy gas consistently. Another part of this work that I had experienced for the first time ever, is that people report back and tell us how things are going, so we reach out oftentimes and say, hey, how's the system going, is it working, is this, is it functioning, do you need more, are you done with it? And the stories that come back are frequently stories of hope, and they're stories of gratitude, coming from people who have experienced a little bit of security in an uncertain time. The stories are sometimes stories about how the little things are the most important things when we're experiencing the hardest days of our lives in this instance. This slide is just kind of a shot of the types of energy that we deployed along with the Starlinks at Footprint Project, so along the bottom, we've got a couple different solar trailers, and a large ground mount array going into a temporary RV spot to run one of those Tesla Power Wall units. The shipping container is in Biltmore Village, and that has one of those Tesla units inside it with a Starlink, and we mounted all the PV on top of it, I actually had somebody from DOE come to town to check out the work we were doing, and he called me two days later and said, I went to these sites and I couldn't find anything, and I said, what sites did you go to? Because I told you to call me on Sunday and I'd take you out there. And he said, he said, well, I went here, and I'm like, yeah, well, we already pulled that site, and he said, well, I went to this one in Biltmore Village, and there was lots of destruction, but I didn't see anything, and I was like, that's my stealth install. It's on top of a shipping container, you never would have seen it if somebody didn't point at it. And then, in the middle on the top, these are what we call like the portable or handheld units, I call them a lot of times, so they're smaller battery generators that would take one or two PV panels. We deployed a lot of that, and slightly smaller versions of those, to people with home healthcare needs after the storm. And then the other one is actually my lovely beautiful little car, charging off of one of the Tesla units that is pulling in PV from the field behind it, and the contennet is a folding shipping container that we deployed a few of as temporary office spaces with some of this asset. So as we moved through the initial response period, we moved into recovery and long-term recovery, and that was kind of a three-pronged approach, and I already talked a little bit about one of those. But we were shifting assets from places that were getting power to places that needed more support for a longer time period, and some of those places are still doing construction, we've reached out to them recently and said, hey, you ready for us to come pick it up? And they're like, if we could have it a few more weeks, it'd be great, it's been super useful, it's saving us from the generator. We also, Footprint Project launched a solar free store, so part of their model is, they take stuff that is at end-of-life for industry, so the components that they're not gonna be selling anymore, and they're phasing out, and they get those donated, and then they build assets out of them and redeploy those into communities, or deploy them post-storm. So, they shipped about 12 pallets worth of stuff into Mars Hill, where Footprint set up a permanent office after the storm, and hired a couple local western North Carolina residents to run a solar free store, where people that had systems that got damaged in the storm can come get replacement components if they're available. And now they're moving into the second phase of that, which is doing these open house nights that allow people to come in and kind of pitch an idea for what they want to do in a clean energy, microgrid-style project. And then if they have the assets available for that, they'll supply that. Batteries are in pretty short supply, we have had a ton of PV panels in the past year, and we've got still probably six pallets of inverters and balance of material type electrical supply stuff, so a lot of times they'll come in, oh, I want to do this thing, okay, well, if you can buy these batteries, we can give you 10 panels, an inverter, we can give you a switchgear, the other necessary components. And the third part of that is, we were looking for ways that we could do long-term resilience in the region. This is another, this is an aspect that Footprint has done before, so a lot of times, post-response, they'll come back six months or a year later during the recovery period, and they'll build power in communities through workshops, and they'll get a community group together, a nonprofit or a response org from that area, they'll bring in supplies, and they'll do a week-long workshop to build a solar trailer, or to build some of the smaller portable, carryable handheld assets, which is where the next partner comes into this process. We were able to get a $5 million award from DEQ in North Carolina to build out community resilience hubs in six affected counties in western North Carolina. This project's focused in Rutherford, Buncombe, Madison, Yancey, Mitchell, and Avery counties. In each of those six counties, we plan to build out up to four sites, so 24 total fixed microgrid sites across six counties. And these typically will be a permanently mounted PV array, and either permanently mounted installed batteries, or a mobile battery asset like a trailer with a decent amount of battery storage. So we have been taking applications, or requests as we call them, because it's not really an application process, since the spring of this year, long before we knew that any of this money was gonna happen, because our intent was always to find a way to fund these projects. Prior to this coming in, two of those projects got picked off of that list by other funders that showed up and said, we want to do a project, and we got some money to spend, what do you got? And we're like, oh, we got this great list of people that want to do this, and great community orgs. So I've been encouraging, as I have traveled around talking about it, people from everywhere in the state to apply for this, because we don't know where the next bunch of money's gonna come from, or where an investor is gonna want to do it. DEQ has expressed that they would like to see this be the pilot that leads to them building out this type of infrastructure across the state. So they also intend to pursue additional funding to build out more of these. This is kind of just an example of what that outline might look like, as far as the types of sizes of buildings that we'll be working with. In addition to the 24 stationary units, we're gonna be developing and deploying two Beehive mobile response hubs. And so I get a lot of questions when I talk about Beehives, and people always say, what are Bee, what's a Beehive? What is, what is this Beehive thing? And I've got some graphics for that, that I can share, if anybody's interested afterwards. But I like to use this picture, because this is a Beehive. And you might wonder what this has to do with energy when the grid goes down. And I'll tell you that, what this has to do with that is inspiration. So Beehive is an amazing example of a community working together for a common goal of a better future. There are bees in the hive that only leave the hive once in their life, and many of those never come back. There's bees in the hive that work all day, every day, and never leave the hive during their lifespan. There's bees that, that don't do a lot of work, but have one job, we won't talk too much about freeloaders, but there are bees in there that just exist and sometimes have to be kicked out of the hive. All communities have all types. And this system is really, it's a very precise and intentional design by nature. Resources are collected by the many, they're concentrated in the areas of greatest need. And the needs of the community are the first and foremost goal of every single member of that community. Everybody plays a role in their success. In this project, a Beehive is this, it's a mobile disaster response hub. The hive will live at a base station, so this would be a facility that might have 100 kilowatts or more of PV installed on it. It's also needs to be a facility that has good access for trucks to come and go. During Blue Skies operations, the bees, which are represented as little solar microgrid trailers, are able to be used as rental units for businesses that would be renting generators otherwise and paying for fuel. They also could power concerts, community events, there's a number of ways these energy assets can be used during Blue Skies operation. The hive also serves as an educational site, so this is a location where school groups and higher ed entities can come and help teach their students about this technology and how it works. During disruptions, the bees, the trailers get deployed out to the area of the disruption, the bees go to the community response hub. From the community response hub, they can then power communications assets, which will be onboard the bees, refrigerate. be onboard the bees, refrigeration, water filtration or atmospheric water generators. And they also will be able to charge devices and just support the needs at the site itself. Also inside the bee is going to be an assortment of handheld units and folding solar panels. The people that run the community hubs know best who in the community is the most vulnerable to a power outage. They're going to be able to deploy those assets the most quickly and effectively to people that need oxygen at night, to people that need CPAPs to survive. And as those assets go out, everything can go back upstream to be charged again. So if there's not sunlight, we've got a backup to go back to the hub to recharge the thing. The hub could go back to the hive to be recharged. All of these systems have some version of backup as we go down until you get to the smallest tier ones. And the hub, the hive, will provide all of the support that they need all the way down. So maintenance or repairs, replacement of assets, additional assets that need to be deployed will all be handled through the hive. The hive will have even more of that supply available. And so what this winds up with in response in the area the hive is in is a really good way to spread this tech out. Now, what happens if the next Helene doesn't come through Asheville, but it goes through Hickory instead? In that case, the entire hive and the bees all get packed into shipping containers, everything except for the large solar array, and moved to a large space near the disaster. Then set up onsite as a new disaster hub. It gets a fairly large PV array. A lot of battery storage will already be in the shipping containers. The bees will be there, the portables will be there, the water. And all of that gets deployed just like it would if it happens in the area where it is. And what this does is fundamentally changes the way that Footprint Project is able to respond to disasters. They've been planning this type of setup for a number of years now, because the way they responded in Asheville is the two founders showed up in a pickup truck with a handful of stuff, some batteries, some solar panels, one case of water, some snacks, their dog, and one change of clothes. Their plan was to come here, drop some stuff off, and head to Florida, who gets hurricanes all the time, and do a formal response there. They were floored when they got here at the level of damage. They started to call their partners all over the country, and we streamed in truckloads of things. There were individuals coming from different states pulling trailers in. There was stuff being flown and trucked from across the country to get here. What they want to do is be able to provide that kind of response in less than a week or two that it takes to collect those assets during a disaster. We're going to be able to move those disaster response assets immediately and start deploying them. Now, I can give you a little bit of project update on where we're at. We are most way done with the first round of site selections. We are going through the kind of technical review of the sites before those announcements are made. We plan to have the RFQ for those sites out in the next couple of months. We also intend to have the second round site selections done by the end of the year. And we're hoping to have sighted the two Beehives, one of those in western North Carolina and one of those in eastern North Carolina, by the end of the year. All of this work is going to continue throughout next year and into early 2027. And our hope is to just keep rolling through it and doing as many sites as we can afford to do by the end of it and find more funding before we run out. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you for a great presentation. Any questions from the Commission?
I'll just say thank you, Ian, for all your work. And it sounds like you're keeping a running list, so if somebody is interested, they should reach out to you and be able to get on that list.
Yeah. And I can share with you all the Jot form for that, so you'll have access to it. But yeah, and my recommendation is if you're not in the, if you are in the six counties, get it in now. If you're not in the six counties, get it in as soon as you can, because we don't know who's going to fund what. And our hope is to use this as a seed. This isn't the end for us. It's a $5 million isn't, yay, we did the thing. $5 million is, we're starting the thing with $5 million. And we want to keep building this out, because we believe in this tech. We've seen how it affects communities without resilient power. Growing up here, I've seen the nature of the storms get progressively worse and the damage get worse. So the expectation is we're going to need all the resiliency we can get.
Ian, I've got a question for you. A lot of the work you guys did was deploy, you know, these very mobile, very portable batteries and solar panels that you could literally lay on the ground. Footprint Project did that. A real lifeline for people, which is incredible to see. But since the storm, you and Buncombe County and I know other folks have talked about installing microgrids that are more permanent, like what this grant would do.
Yeah.
That aren't mobile, that are, you know, screwed to the side of a building.
Right.
I guess in your experience, after going through all this, how do you, what makes a community more resilient? Is it, is it very mobile, portable, solar and batteries? Or is it?
I think it's a combination.
Yeah.
So prior to Helene, I'd spent the better part of the last couple of years teaching people about community resilience hubs and what those look like, not just from an energy standpoint, but from the entirety of things available to the community. And had, we had written a number of applications for those. One got returned just prior to this, or right at the storm, for us being a climate haven. The thing that makes a community the most resilient is if there's already some sort of structure in place that is providing resources and connections to the community. And so I, I talk about Spring Creek Community Center a lot, because it's just a really cool example to me of what can be built by a community. They got, they gained access and ownership of the old school building. They have pursued grant funding repeatedly to build out this building in phases. They have a library. They have food production and storage equipment. There's a commercial kitchen out back that does meal programs. They do dances, they do community meetings, they, you know, all of the things. This community comes together at this place. So when something like Helene happens, this is naturally the place people drift to. If you're looking for work and you can't find a job, you go to your community hub and you find help getting a job. So that's kind of the predecessor for it. And in-site selection, a lot of what we're looking at is, is this a site that's providing resources to the community during Blue Skies? Because if it's not, that asset is not going to get as fully used, and the site is not as resilient. Then we're adding to that the energy type. And that's why I left kind of the open-ended fixed PV, but maybe mobile battery. So some site users just want batteries bolted to the walls, and that's what they're going to do. And in the case of a fire department or a community hub, where that site is always going to be the place where things are happening, that makes sense. Some sites have requested the potential for mobile battery storage. So that could be 60, 80, 100 kilowatt hours of battery storage that plugs into the building and runs during Blue Skies, and then they could unplug it and drag it to another one of their sites to do something there. I think there's a lot of flexibility in that.
Yeah.
There's also the battery library end of the smaller units and the smaller solar panels. I mean, I think to get the full effect of community resiliency, the hub needs to be the place that people know to go already. It needs to already have some prep for resources and for storm response, and then resilient power and assets that can be handed out to community members on an as-needed basis.
My last question is, my ears perked up when you mentioned in Marshall, they were using that equipment to power fans. And I just remember during Helene, thinking about how much worse we'd all be off if it was really hot and people really needed air conditioning and just like the whole extra layer of trouble we would be in. So that's what I think about. I'm sitting here worrying about the future, like.
And in their instance, in Rollins, those houses had been full of water a week earlier. So they were powering fans to blow the moist air out of the house, because it was actually nice out.
Yeah.
And it would dry out. They were drying the houses with the fans. But that is part of, this is super tiny, but that is part of this build is the potential for some of the things to be able to power cooling stations.
Yeah, that was my question.
It's not something that we've experienced here as much. In fact, Footprints learned a lot of lessons here. We learned that we need more things with heated batteries in this area, where in New Orleans, where they're housed, they have more need for refrigerated things. And so there's kind of a, there's been a learning curve in that. But yeah, that's definitely one of the considerations is some assets that can run some climate control things.
Yeah.
To try to do that. And that likely will be initially part of the hive. And then as the tech develops, may be able to be moved out into the smaller assets as well. A lot of times the trailer, if it can pull enough battery storage to run an HVAC unit for a building, it needs to be pulled by something that's too big to get down any of the roads we had left here.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, Chair Edwards is back, but absent her being immediately ready to jump back in, I'm happy to introduce the next one, the review of policies for the board approvals, Amy Davis and Matt Evans, if you'd like to step up. I was really worried you were pointing at me, Matt. I was like, you're grossly out of luck if you think I'm going to do this.
Good afternoon. My name's Amy Davis. I'm the Employee Relations Manager in HR, and I have a few policies to talk through today. So we plan to bring three policies for your approval at a future meeting, and we have two policies just for your awareness. So we'll jump right in. The first is our conflict of interest policy. So this policy reflects our commitment to ensuring that we protect the public's trust and to ensure that we protect the integrity of the county's business operations. So the purpose of the policy is to guide and provide guidance to employees on how to identify and avoid conflicts of interest. And it lays out the expectation that county employees are expected to ensure their private interests do not impede their ability to perform their county job responsibilities in an objective manner and to do so in the public's best interest. The policy changes reflected in the revision are mostly from the removal of secondary employment. We've pulled all of that content out of the conflict of interest policy and created a separate standalone secondary employment policy, which we'll talk about in a couple minutes. The other changes were much more minor, working to streamline definitions, to centralize the required disclosures. We did shift oversight from HR to employees' chain of command, but otherwise, just really tightening up the policy to improve readability. Up next, we have our separation policy. So this policy is intended to provide clear guidance on how employees separate from their employment with the county. It includes three types of voluntary separation and six types of involuntary separations. And it addresses any type of specific notification requirements or right to appeal. There were no major or substantial changes in the revision. We just worked to clean it up. We did clarify responsibilities of employees and supervisors and department directors. We corrected a few HR references, and we encourage employees to engage in exit interviews. And then up next, we have our grant-funded positions policy. So this is exactly as the title implies. It provides information to employees who are in positions that are funded through grants. The policy addresses how employees are appointed to those positions, as well as how benefits and compensation are handled for those employees. The revisions to the policy were pretty minor, just some housekeeping and updates. We worked to clarify the language for responsibilities and roles of different players, so supervisors, directors, HR, those different roles and aspects of grant administration. We added clarity around benefits when they start for grant employees. And then we ensured consistency across policies and referencing things like covered status and the employee pay policy. And then here's that secondary employment policy that I've mentioned a moment ago. So this is a new policy. So this is content that was in the conflict of interest policy, now new standalone policy. Similar to conflict of interest, the intention here is to ensure the integrity of county operations and to ensure that employees' personal interests or secondary employment activities do not create conflicts of interest. So the purpose is to provide employees with clear guidance on how to prevent conflicts of interest and safeguard the public's trust in any type of, any type of secondary employment So we use a very broad definition of secondary employment. This is intended to be all encompassing of all the various ways that employees might engage in gig, side gigs, gig work, independent contractor work, platform-based work, and those sorts of things. And so it includes anything from any income generating activities, business activities, any paid work, anything outside an employee's employment with the county. And so the basis of the policy is that employees may engage in secondary employment activities as long as they first request advanced approval and to, they disclose it during the annual disclosure process. And they also ensure that their secondary employment is congruent with all of these expectations.
Can I ask, before you move from that slide, is that effective, like as of us passing it? If someone's already working a secondary position, would they have to disclose that moving forward? Or what's the grandfathering?
So our plan is to move forward with the annual disclosure period in November. And so this would line up very nicely. So if the policy's approved, then we would have that annual campaign where all employees complete their conflict of interest disclosure, as well as secondary employment disclosure.
Thank you.
Afternoon, Commissioners. So we're also here to share with you for your awareness, the key updates to Buncombe County's travel policy. This policy sets the standards for how individuals travel on behalf of Buncombe County for official business, and more importantly, how we ensure accountability and fairness in the use of taxpayer dollars. The purpose of this policy is simple, to provide consistency and fairness across departments, to protect public resources, and to make sure that travel is always tied to advancing the county's mission. We've built in safeguards to ensure that all expenses are reasonable and have outlined accountability throughout the policy. For this policy, clarity is key. This policy acts as a guide for how employees are to be reimbursed for allowable expenses, while noting certain expenses that may exist and how to remain compliant. So this policy was last updated in 2018. So the first major change is the format. In addition to the language edits, we simply restructured the document in a more reader-friendly way. This policy is referenced frequently throughout the county, so it's important that it's easy to understand. Within the policy, there are various edits to clarify expectations related to pre-travel activities like booking accommodations, activities while on travel, such as expectations related on how to purchase meals and fuel a vehicle, and post-travel activities, such as the reimbursement process. We've also aligned this policy with other relevant policies, such as the vehicle usage policy and the flexible workplace arrangement policy. So in summary, this travel policy update reflects best practices in government operations, creates a fair, consistent, and accountable framework for travel. Most importantly, it ensures that every dollar spent on travel is in service to the county's mission and the community we serve. So in your board packet, there are documents related to the conflict of interest separation and grant-funded positions policy. Please review these documents prior to the October 21 regular meeting, where we will ask you for a vote of approval. So, any questions?
Just curious, so there's an approval process for secondary income. Could you talk about what that approval process looks like? Because I'm just thinking of a county staff member who needs some extra income and they just want to go work Uber. And, you know, how, how big of a hurdle is that to get that approval?
Amy's going to take that one for you, Commissioner.
Sure. So we have a process that employees can submit a form in a disclosures management software system that allows the employee to document where they intend to work, their hours, expectations. We understand that if they're doing this in advance, that they may not know those details of it. But it allows that to be entered, and then the system notifies their supervisor and allows them to quickly review that. Assuming that there's no apparent conflict of interest, the approval process should be very quick. If there are concerns, it allows the supervisor to escalate that request up their chain of command for guidance. And then when a decision is reached, that goes back to the employee for kind of final approval. And so our intention would always be to support employees, but we don't want to do so at the expense of allowing employees to enter into some type of secondary employment that could create a conflict of interest or other problems with their job.
Thank you so much. The only other question I have is how exit interviews are utilized.
That is a great question. So we've actually worked on, Karen, our HR director's in the room, so if you want to jump in, please feel free to. so if you want to jump in, please feel free to. But we've recently revamped that process to ensure that we're using our ERP Workday to connect the employees, and they have access to do that. And so that information is collected by our employee engagement manager within HR and then synthesized and then reported out. I believe it's intended to be shared on a quarterly basis to identify concerns, trends, feedback, to look for ways that we can improve the employee experience.
Okay. Great. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
I do want to clarify, the travel policy does extend to the Board of Commissioners, correct?
It's your choice. But, and I mean, take that as you will. So the, the policy is intended to be written for employees, folks on business. When we were dealing with Helene, we had unusual circumstances. So we found that the policy worked then with this draft, so.
And Commissioners, when you adopt it, if you want any policy as county employee policy to apply to the board, you have to physically say that.
Okay.
When you adopt it.
Thank you, Alroy.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you both. We'll move into our next item, which is our Helene Recovery Projects and Funding, and Jeremiah LaRoy, and I think Matt Evans is back for this, for this one as well.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's great to be here. I am very excited to talk to you about recovery projects and funding combined, right? We've talked to you a lot about one, and we've talked to you a lot about the other. What we're hoping to do here today is connect the dots a little bit, right? So we've talked a lot about recovery projects. We're gonna go over that a little bit. We're gonna talk about our approach to funding, and we're gonna talk about some of the major funding sources, sort of, I call them the big three, right? The major funding sources where the big pots of money exist, although we'll also touch on the fact that there are lots of other funding sources as well. So, recovery projects. As you're well aware, we went through a long process to create the Helene Recovery Plan. The Helene Recovery Plan is a draft of 31 projects, and those projects cover a number of different areas tied to our strategic plan. Obviously, you can see, you know, a big chunk of those are in public safety. Obviously, that's, that's to be expected, growth and development, economic, energy and environment, et cetera. So when we say 31 projects, though, we don't really mean 31 projects, right? 31 projects, when you look at the recovery plan, it'll have something like affordable housing development as a project. Well, that's Ferry Road, that's Cox Avenue, that's a connection road to get to Ferry Road. That one project is actually several, for lack of a better term, sub-projects, right? So when we say we have 31 projects, what that currently equates to is 137 projects. So no small task. And of course, we've, we've provided you in your packets a list of all of those 137 projects. For the, for brevity's sake, we're not going through all of them today. But we did want you to have that. I believe Sarah sent you a spreadsheet, so you could look through it, and you should have something in your packet that sort of, again, details all of these. So we're really talking a significant number of projects and a, and a big lift for the county as well. Now, our approach to this, you all are familiar with our recovery support functions, our debris and infrastructure and, and et cetera. Well, we've, we've had this foundational recovery support function as well. And within that recovery support function, there is a Grants and Funding Work Group. That work group consists of folks from our strategic partnerships groups and finance, et cetera. And they have been, for many, many months now, identifying as many different potential funding opportunities as they can, looking at a variety of criteria. What's the award amount? What are the priorities of that award? Is there a cost share required? When is the application due? Lots of different things. At this time, there's over 130 prospect, prospective funding sources that they have identified that could potentially match up with a variety of these. Again, don't take anything that those numbers are similar. 137 projects, 130 funding sources. They're not one-to-one. But the, the point is that there are a lot of different funding sources out there, but we also have a lot of work to do. So that, that group has done a really good job of being very diligent and keeping track of these potential funding sources for us. But, as I said, there's kind of a big three, as I like to think of them. And that is, well, there, there are lots of different types, right? There's non-competitive, there's competitive, there's disaster response, there's repair and replacement, there's mitigation, resiliency projects, et cetera. Those big three are the ones you see highlighted, and that's FEMA Public Assistance, that's our Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP, and that's our Community Development Block Grant for Disaster Recovery. Those are all three that you've heard lots about. We're gonna get into them in a little more detail today, because we're, all of them, to some degree, we're learning more and more as we go through this process ourselves, right? PA. PA, you've heard a lot about. It really fixes the things in local government that got broke, right? So when the disaster happened and public property was destroyed, PA can come in and help that. It's, it's constrained to public facilities only that receive damage from the storm, right? Where HMGP, for example, is more of a mitigation and risk reduction, right? So we can flood-proof and wind-harden and provide backup power. But, again, has limitations. It's really only for what they consider to be critical public facilities. So that'll be things like fire departments and EMS. And 35 Woodfin would be another, like, good example. There's a backup 911 center there, so critical facility and those types of things. The deadline for at least the initial submissions for those was yesterday. So we submitted a lot of applications yesterday. And of course, then there is also CBGDR, which you've heard a lot about up to this point. And DR really is, they like to say, that funding of last resort. If it's not covered in other places, DR will consider it. However, if other funding sources will cover it, DR will say, nope, you can get that somewhere else, right? So it's a little more flexible in what it does fund. You know, housing, economic revitalization, resilience, et cetera. But it is, if it can be covered somewhere else, DR is not gonna pay for it. It's not a one-to-one path to find funding to do a project. The example I like to use most frequently is Owen Park, right? Owen Park was severely damaged by the storm. Well, we're probably gonna get insurance money for that. We're probably going to seek FEMA PA for that. We're probably gonna seek HMGP for that, and we might very well seek DR for that as well, right? That one site, we may go to a number of different funding sources. So these are very complex pathways potentially. And as you can imagine, if we've got four different funding sources for one location, the administrative burden on that as well, the reporting requirements are different for each of these funding sources, et cetera. Like, it's a big administrative lift, and that's just one location, right? So these, these funding sources are complex. We're gonna probably use more than one for multiple sites. So I, I just wanted to be transparent about the fact that these are, these are complex. And so depending on the, the project and the location, there could be a lot more than one funding source involved. The one I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about, and then I'm gonna kick it over to EB and then to Matt, is hazard mitigation. That's, I, I personally have just been neck-deep in hazard mitigation grants for the last couple of months, so they let me talk about it. And hazard mitigation, there's really a handful of types of applications. You've heard hazard mitigation a lot. This is completely separate from the residential buyout and, and elevation, the acquisition and elevation side. That's a completely separate pot, or not pot, but a completely separate program. What we're talking about here are, are like, again, the sort of competitive infrastructure upgrade type of grants. There's advanced assistance grants. Many of our projects fall into this category because we need advanced assistance, and that's mostly like engineering, to understand the full scope and cost of a project, because we may not have the in-house expertise to determine that, that information. And so you write a grant for advanced assistance, get an engineer to come in, give you the full scope and cost potentially, and then you write another application to do the project. Regular applications, they feel like are more shovel-ready. Funding is available, we're ready to go. That said, all of those projects do still have to pass what is called a FEMA Cost-Benefit Analysis. It's exactly what it sounds like. They want to know what it's gonna cost, and then what the benefit is. And FEMA has a tool that they use, and they're looking for a ratio of one. So for every dollar you spend, there's a benefit that's a dollar, basically. There is, however, a pot of money they call 5% Initiative Funding, because not everything fits into that category, right? There's, you know, round peg, kind of square hole, it's, it doesn't work. And so there's, they set aside 5% of the funding just for those things that they know are not gonna fit neatly into a Cost-Benefit Analysis. The example I'm using here is educational campaigns. You can spend money on education. It's difficult to say that, like, the actual return on investment is dollar for dollar, right? So they set aside a, a pot of money for that. And then they set aside 7% of the total pot for planning initiatives. So wildfire mitigation planning is one of the, obviously, big needs for us and something that's a big concern for our emergency services folks moving forward, is what's the next big disaster? So we want to be prepared for it. So they set aside 7% of the funding for planning activities as well. So we've submitted all of these types of applications, but just wanted you to kind of understand what HMGP is and what the, what the types of things they fund are. Again, in your packet, you have all the details in terms of all of the projects, so I won't get into, you know, any real detail here, but wanted to just, again, show you a little bit of an example of some of the HMGP applications that we've gotten. Again, we submitted these yesterday to State North Carolina Emergency Management. And from there, they move up, go through an evaluation process, will probably be a little back and forth to fine-tune some of those applications. Then they go to a FEMA for approval after that. So we will see, we have a little bit of time to sort of, again, continue to fine-tune those things. So, again, go to your meeting packet, and you've got all of the projects listed. But I'm gonna kick it over to EB for Community Development. However, I, I do want to take a minute to answer, answer any questions that you might have about HMGP or any of, any of the things that we've talked about thus far.
With the projects, you have some on there. I think it's like community centers, it's hardening, flood-proofing, and some of the Buncombe County buildings. For those, are you looking at, speaking, since we were talking about the microgrids earlier.
Yeah.
Is that part of what?
Oh, you bet it is. You don't think I would let that get past me, do you? Of course it is. It, they're, they're not called that. Redundant Power Projects is what they're referred to in the Hazard Mitigation Program. Yes, with a wink, that's right. And yes, we are absolutely chasing down that potential funding opportunity for resilient power. I'll call it that for now.
Thank you.
I just have two thoughts on things that I think might be missing from this list, but I'll.
Great. Yeah, I mean, we've got more, so if you, if you want to wait, that's fine. I can swing back by if I need to. Any other questions? I'm gonna kick it over to EB to talk about CBGDR.
I think we're ready for EB.
Great.
Thanks, Jeremiah.
Got it.
Hi, Commissioners. Community Development Block Grants, Disaster Recovery, CBGDR, or my favorite acronym in government right now. It's been a minute since we've talked about CBGDR as a whole. I know that you all have heard a lot about Renewancy and the Reconstruction Rehabilitation Program. So I just wanted to provide a brief recap of the funding opportunity in North Carolina. So in January 2025, we received, or the Western North Carolina, received $1.6 billion in CBGDR funds, which were allocated for Helene relief. $1.4 billion of that went to the state of North Carolina for 29 impacted counties. And then the city of Asheville also received an allocation of $225 million. I already mentioned the state-managed program for reconstruction of homes. That's the Renewancy, and $860 million has been set aside for that. Today, we're gonna share a little bit more about the competitive grant programs and the information that we have to date for multifamily housing construction, community infrastructure, and commercial district revitalization. I want to note that there is a fourth competitive grant program, Workforce Housing for Ownership. The state has not yet indicated that they're working on that program, but I wanted to flag that it is still an opportunity that will come up in the future. For the process, both the state and the city have been working with HUD to refine the projects that they will be funding with their CBGDR allocations. The first step in that process, and the, the document that we have currently to look at, was their state action plan. That was the last time that we talked about CBGDR as a whole, was providing comment on that action plan. And that's still what stands as the most up-to-date document. The next step for the state and the city will be to work on their programs and policies, which is essentially just a grant manual that outlines eligible uses for funds. The note I want to make there is that it's, can be a further refinement of what they listed as their interested activities in the action plan, so they can say a broader use of the funds in the action plan, and then take that broad use and make it a little further refined as to what they're gonna fund. They've been seeking information about unmet needs in our community. And so we know that they're further refining their programs and policies, and we're waiting for publication of those. The third step after programs and policies will be for the notices of funding opportunity to be published. And that will be the final part of this first process in getting funding out the door to communities. The three competitive grant programs that I wanted to highlight today are the Multifamily Housing Construction Program, Community Infrastructure and Commercial District Revitalization. Multifamily Housing Construction is the first program the state has indicated that we'll get additional information about. So as I mentioned, we're still waiting on those programs and policies, and we're hopeful that that will be published soon. After the Multifamily Housing Construction Program, the state has indicated they will publish those documents for community infrastructure and commercial district revitalization. Still waiting on that information. Here we have a similar chart to what Jeremiah shared for HMGP, which highlights a few of our bigger CBGDR potential applications. As Jeremiah also mentioned, all of the projects that were currently listed are available in your handout, but here are just a few that we've seen as being common and of interest. I'll also pause and see if you all have any CBGDR-specific questions before I pass to Matt.
When did you say the Community Commercial District Revitalization Program would go live?
We, we have very loose timelines. We're hopeful that we'll still see the programs published in the next few months. The first one will be Multifamily Housing Construction. And then after that will be Community Infrastructure and Commercial District Revitalization. The last timeline I got was fall, but we've, we've not yet seen anything published.
Right. When Commerce was here at our meeting, I thought they, I thought they gave us some dates, but. Okay. Okay.
We're keeping an eye out.
Yeah, fall.
Yeah, fall.
It's possible we're already there.
And then you say, where you say it likely aligns with the LITEC process, is that positive for us, that it's aligning with that process?
Yes. It sounds like one of the elements that they're currently working out is specifically for multifamily housing construction, is how the applications can do both. How a project could apply for a project that will go to LITEC, and how they could apply if they're also not going to LITEC. And that is as complicated and confusing as you probably think it is. So they're, they're trying to create a, a program that will work for both opportunities. But overall, for our applications, yes, the alignment with LITEC will be helpful. They are hoping to be able to make sure the process ensures that projects in the LITEC cycle can demonstrate that they have funding for their, their gap.
Glad you brought that up, Commissioner Wells. We learned today in the Housing Subcommittee that NC HFA is unfortunately weighing in on their, in their QAP as it relates to CBGDR and proposing to discount projects. That's my word, discount projects that receive LITEC funding and counting a CBGDR award as a part of their LITEC award. So, which I think we should fight very loudly. But I guess I want to clarify, is NC Commerce weighing in on? I know NC HFA obviously is, because it's their job to weigh in on LITEC policies and procedures, but is NC Commerce weighing in on how LITEC and DR dollars interact with each other?
I, I know that we, we've heard that they've been in conversation about how these will work together. I don't know if I can say whether or not they're weighing in on how it should work, but I can follow up and see if we can get any more information. But we do know that they've had conversations between the two organizations to see how they can work together.
Just, just to clarify, I want to make sure I understand. So you're saying that should they do what they're thinking about, that if we receive the CDBG, BGDR funding?
I just said DR.
Okay, yeah. DR funding.
We know.
If we receive that funding on one of the projects that we put forward, then you're saying, even though typically. saying, even though typically we would have also received Lytech, and that would have helped move that project forward, are you saying that they're proposing that if we get the DR funding, we would not be eligible for the Lytech anymore?
What we learned today, and I think I'm saying this correctly, is that NC HFA is proposing that if a project, uh, a, a affordable housing multifamily project, uh, is awarded, let's say ten dollars for easy math, of Lytech, that whatever, and DR dollars, um, that, that HFA would count the DR dollars against the Lytech award, thus dis- discounting, let's say, the Lytech by three dollars that we get from DR. So essentially, I would argue, going over the will of Congress and their, 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 uh, the bill that's supposed to give us extra money for Hlean, um, they're essentially moving Lytech dollars out of the West, moving them to other parts of the state. That's how that would result.
We'll follow back up with Matt and NC HFA, because in my mind, if it's a nine percent and it's eligible for nine percent, I'm not sure why they would change that tax credit deal for us, but we wanna follow up and get back with you on, on how that would play, because we were looking at DR as gap, to fill the gap after we do the nine percent or the four percent, whatever credits we get from them, from Lytech. So I'll be curious to understand what they mean by.
It seems like they're trying to make the gap bigger, 'cause we have this gap, 'cause we have this gap funding we're, we're considering as a region, yeah.
We'll follow up on that end.
I was just saying, we'll follow back up with NC HFA Housing Finance Agency to make sure we understand how that plays together, 'cause I don't understand how they could move a nine percent or not, but we also have that standing meeting with Grow NC that we can raise these issues with to make sure both Commerce and HFAs are talking. And, and Rachel wanted to make sure I clarify that that October sixth meeting date that we set the deadline for HMGP from Jeremiah, that was the initial submission. We still have until the thirty-first to finalize. So if you did find something that we need to work on that was missing from there, there's still time.
Okay, oh, a, a project that.
Yes, that you think is missing from there, there's still time.
Any other CBGDR questions before I pass to Matt?
EB, is it anticipated that on the community infrastructure, that, that will be primarily governmental entities that will apply for that versus others?
Correct, yes. Uh, so among the, um, the items that we do have, the, the state in their HUD-approved action plan outlined the eligible applicants for each pot of funds, and for infrastructure, local governments are the only eligible applicants for funding.
Thank you.
And my apologies, I had one additional slide. I wanted to reemphasize, uh, a note that Jeremiah made earlier about, um, what, what can be funded using CBGDR. So there's a process, um, for showing that there's been a non-duplication of benefit, um, and so when we highlight the example of Owen Park, uh, as we prep, prepare a CBGDR application, we'll have to demonstrate how we've accessed insurance funding, FEMA PA, and all other federal and state programs before making a request to CBGDR. Um, and so just wanted to highlight again, the funding of last resort, um, is how they refer to it, and, um, it'll be a, a process to demonstrate that we've accessed all available funding. And I'll give it to Matt.
Commissioners, hello again. Happy to share some progress today and prepare you for the road that we're still on with PA. Before we do that, I wanna highlight our Hlean financials dashboard. It features data showing Hlean-related spending and revenues or reimbursements. The dashboard is available to you all and to everyone in the public on our county website, and the URL is there. It's updated regularly, so. For PA, so county staff continue to work with various partners, submit projects to FEMA. To date, the county has identified fifty-six FEMA PA projects, and a breakdown of the fifty-six projects is shown on this slide. So I'm gonna try to walk down fifty-six, and we're gonna go down the list. And note, as of drafting the presentation, the county has submitted thirty-two projects, so fifty-two projects, I'm sorry, fifty-six projects and we've submitted thirty-two. So nineteen projects have been submitted and obligated or approved by FEMA, totaling approximately sixteen-point-four million dollars. Of the sixteen-point-four million dollars in obligated projects, Buncombe County has received two-point-two million dollars. Sixteen project, I'm sorry, yeah, sixteen projects totaling approximately twelve-point-seven million dollars have been submitted to FEMA and are in various stages of approval. Staff are working internally with our recovery consultant and various others to develop the remaining twenty-one FEMA projects, so I hope all those numbers add up, twenty-one, sixteen, and nineteen, they should. We're estimating the dollar amount associated with the twenty-one remaining projects to be approximately twenty-one million dollars, and this amount will most likely change as details finalize. I'm gonna stay here for just a second if you all have any questions about this slide. So fifty-six FEMA projects, nineteen submitted and obligated, sixteen submitted but not obligated, and twenty-one in development. And obligated, yes, does mean approved. And here, I'm gonna highlight again something that Jeremiah said and EB said. So we referenced the packet that you have available, and it lists a whole bunch of recovery projects, and it's just good to know that the public assisted funding is just one piece of the funding pie for these projects. Questions on PA?
What is the anticipation or expectation of slowing this process down even further with the current federal government shutdown?
So we'll say FEMA's still working, and we're still going through our approval steps.
Excellent.
The, um, what am I supposed to call this? The draft recovery project spreadsheet, uh, that has the little boxes. Some of them don't have an X near a anticipated funding source. I assume that's 'cause you don't know.
Yeah, maybe we haven't, we have not yet found what we consider to be sort of the, the hand-in-glove match. Sorry, yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're, we're essentially still looking for what we feel like is the best funding match, um, so, and with a hundred and thirty-seven projects, I mean, it's a, we're pretty active in, in seeking funding opportunities, but there's a lot to go through. Uh, but yes, that's, you have that right.
Okay.
But happy to answer any additional questions anyone has.
Any other questions?
I'll just leave you with the two things in my head that I think are quote-unquote "missing." I know we've talked about them to some degree. The first being some sort of commercial district revitalization application for Anton Swannanoa. Is that in this, is that in this list?
Yeah.
Well, we talked about, yeah, but I guess, anyway, that, that's not in the, in this draft list, right? Or is it?
I can talk about this.
I will say that the, um, of the CBGDR programs, we're still anticipating the most, um, information out of the commercial district revitalization pot of funds from the state. They, they create a really broad, um, definition of that in their action plan, and they've been seeking additional input from communities about how to further refine it. And so we put, I would call it a placeholder in the projects for now, um, but we will, whatever projects that they, they deem eligible, that they, they wanna see in the application process, we're hoping to get additional information, um, and we can work with them to put together an application that'll work for the community. But we definitely have that funding source in mind for Swannanoa. We just don't have all the details yet about what we can say will be an appropriate application.
Gotcha. Yeah, I think I keep bringing it up or thinking about it, because it is so broad, that seems overwhelming to me, 'cause it's just like, what do you even, how do you even choose what to?
We're hopeful that placemaking activities, pedestrian access, infrastructure, items like that will be eligible, um, but we just don't have the, the final information to really formulate a project yet.
Okay. The only other thing in my head that I should've brought up three meetings ago, 'cause it came before us in affordable housing, is some sort of multi-unit or multifamily housing project in, in Swannanoa, out, in that area. I know it's, you know, the ones we have on here are, is land we own, which is a lot easier to, obviously do, but still seems like a worthy goal, uh, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all very much.
Absolutely, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, Commissioners, um.
Commissioners, can I just say how much I appreciate staff working through this? This has been a lot, a heavy lifting, plus trying to do their day jobs. And so you'll see us come forward again with the Hlean office, but that person can't do it all by themselves, is still gonna take staff, so I just wanna say kudos to staff. This has been a lot of learning, even to get to this point, 'cause none of us have gone through this level of detail on projects before, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for acknowledging that, and we also appreciate all the work of the staff as well. Thank you. We will move into our open discussion, and in front of you, there are two letters. We have been asked to support the certificate of need for Advent Health for the additional one-hundred-and-twenty-nine beds, and we have, oh, sorry, I was counting that on the open discussion. I did not, we're good. Is that going on the consent agenda? All right, sorry about that. Is there any other open discussion? That's what happens. I apologize, I was late. I'm part of the Hunt Institute's latest Elevate NC cohort, and so I was driving back from Winston-Salem. Is there any other open discussion? If not, yes, ma'am.
April, is the resolution for the Fairview Christmas Parade ready? Can we add that to the agenda?
I sent you an email because we needed the details.
Okay. So.
Yes, Commissioner Horton, before we can actually do the details, we need to know the parade route and a lot of, there, there are a bunch of things that we, that we still need in order to actually pass the resolution.
Are those the details?
There was also, um, oh goodness, Attorney Amy, um.
Yes, I sent you the draft resolution and the blanks that we need to fill.
She said that the resolution had to come before the approval, like, it was.
Agreed. So the process would be that we get the details from Tiffany or that organization that we can put into resolution, and then we can submit the application, but we need the details into resolution, the routes that we talked about briefly, the.
Or they can submit the details without it being approved by the NCDOT?
We, we have to share those details with NCDOT to get them approve it. So we would need, where do you want to have the actual route for the, for the parade? That's the, and the time, the date, those pieces, those pieces we need to put into the resolution, and then we can bring that to the board. So we can talk after this and see if we can get some details for the twenty-first meeting.
They don't have that yet, so.
I mean, you and I, and then we can craft whatever message we need to send to them so they can get us those details so we can get the application submitted. Thanks.
I'm just really excited about that.
Are there any other items for open discussion? All right, if not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned. We will see you upstairs at five.